Cleveland Heights University State School Board of Education to order. Mr. Gaynor, would you call the roll?
Mr. Cobble.
Here.
Ms. Pepler.
Mr. Register.
Here.
Mr. Silverman.
Here.
Mr. Zucker.
Here.
Okay. Our first item is B 1 through 6 personnel. I'll accept a motion to approve it. Sumo.
Second.
Any discussion? Questions? Gaynor.
Mr. Cobble.
Yes.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
Mr. Silverman.
Yes.
Mr. Zucker.
Yes.
Can I do an introduction?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to utilize this time to introduce our new Assistant Superintendent. So, the Cleveland Heights University High School District has named Felicia Gould as the new Assistant Superintendent. She will begin August 1st. Ms. Gould comes into this position with extensive experiences and leadership skills. She began her career as a high school biology teacher in Akron Public Schools before promotion, being promoted to a middle school principal and also the high school principal. Ms. Gould has received numerous of awards, including the Akron Urban League Educator of the Year, the Akron NASB Outstanding Administrator, and the Ohio Association of Secondary School Administrators Middle School Principal of the Year, and the Ohio Association of Principals and Student Appreciation Award. She has earned her Bachelor's in Arts from Talladega College in Biology, and she also holds a Master's Degree in Biology, Secondary Education, and Education Administration, all from the University of Akron. We're very lucky to have Ms. Gould, someone as talented and experienced, especially in the area of sciences, because we know that that is the area that students throughout the nation in Ohio have not done well in our state testing. So, to have someone with her background to be able to complement that to our district is definitely a plus. So, I believe she would be invaluable to this district, and we welcome her to the Tigray Nation family. So, Ms. Gould, if you would come up and if you have a few words to say.
First, let me begin by thanking the Board of Education and Dr. Dixon for the appointment of Assistant Superintendent. I would also like to thank my family who is here with me this evening for their support throughout this process, and also to the interview committee for selecting me for such an astute position as Assistant Superintendent to lead the district with helping with student achievement and moving students to be college and career-ready. I look forward to working with Dr. Dixon and her team, and I look forward to working in the community and for the students of Cleveland Heights University Heights. So, again, thank you for the appointment.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, so I think we have the entire team. We're complete now, because if you recall, we hired the Director of Career Tech and several other administrators. So, I think we're now, the team is now complete with addition of Ms. Gould. So, thank you all, and I know you're proud of her, and we're excited in the district to have her as a member of our team. So, thank you.
Thank you. Welcome aboard. We look forward to it. I think we should take the business section, take them separate? Or we can take them together? Okay, I'll accept a motion to approve C 1 and 2. Sumo. Any discussion? Any questions? Did you second it?
I did now.
Scott gave me a nod. Any questions?
I have a...
Go ahead.
Could you explain in real brief, Rachel Wixey does what for us again?
Okay. Rachel Wixey does all our subservices here. So, what they'll do is they'll make sure, we have an AESOP system, and they'll make sure all our subs are covered, and that's really the bulk of what they do for us.
In the AESOP, what is, what's the acronym that you, AESOP, what is that?
Oh, AESOP is Electronic System. So, if there's someone absent, any staff member that's absent, that would be put into the AESOP system, and then automatically people can pick those jobs up through the Internet. And any jobs that aren't picked up, Rachel Wixey will call, and we'll try to get subs for that day.
I assume they do this for other systems as well, so they have like a very large pool, like a subpool, if you will?
Yes, they do.
Okay.
Okay? Thanks.
Anything else? Mr. Gaynor.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
Mr. Silverman.
Yes.
Mr. Zucker.
Yes.
Mr. Cobble.
Yes.
Okay, so we're now ready for our facilities work session. Mrs. Chigalis?
Thank you. Good evening, and we have with us Gary Baylog, who is going to do a presentation on the latest design development plans that, and really highlight the changes that have made since the last time that you've seen those. So, Gary, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thanks. Can everyone hear me? Can you hear me? This is actually a re-presentation of the DD documents, and so this is the site plan. Nothing has really changed significantly. We still have parking over here and a drive on the east side of the building, drive on the west side of the building with some parking, ancillary parking out on Washington, delivery area back here, primary entrance to the building over here, a secondary entrance in the historic portion of the building. Again, this is the development of the gateway building, the main building, and then the development of courtyard area here. This does not include the landscape plan. There are still four floors in the building. This is the Washington level, which is primarily the, the kind of buff-colored area is predominantly PE space, gray area is support space, mechanical space, that kind of stuff. The spaces that are kind of this lavender color are CTE, and then this space over here is building services. So, dock area, building services, ancillary gym, gymnasium, swimming pool, secondary entrance over here, which would serve the swimming pool, and some of these spaces that are associated with PE and athletics that could possibly be used for some community activities, main gymnasium, weight room, support spaces, locker rooms, et cetera, some additional CTE space over here, and then locker room space and space for P E and athletic staff. So, this is the Washington level. This is what we call the Cedar level, main entrance, main student entrance and public entrance over here, administrative spaces and their support. This is a mini auditorium, media center, food service and student dining, the existing auditorium. These spaces over here are audio and video, digital, business, special education, some administrative support spaces, and then the blue areas back here are predominantly associated with the music program. Second floor is primarily academic spaces. This is, these are core academic areas over in here. We do have, as before, we do have administrative spaces throughout the building on the, on the upper floors. This is balcony seating over here. The light green areas are sciences, and we do have some CTA space, pharmacy and health sciences on the, on the second floor. And then the third floor, again, is a repeat of the academic spaces, science integrated with some of the other core academic spaces, administrative spaces. This blue area here is art, and then we have, one of the changes that we've made is we have moved fashion and sewing up to the, to a space that is closely associated with the art program, because there may be some synergy between those two programs. And then on the fourth floor is vocal music and all of their support spaces. You've all seen this rendering before. There have been some minor changes to the building exterior on the, on what we call the wraps and the stairs. This was a sketch that we did, and then this is a little finished, more finished rendering of that. Obviously, we've made some changes, some of the materiality has, has changed, and as we go through construction, complete construction documents, some of those details and some of that will also, will also change. Again, a sketch of the, this is the student dining, this is the academic bar, and this is the wrap that is on the 26th building, and then this is a little bit more finished rendering of those same spaces. This is, this is the swimming pool and auxiliary gym, secondary entrance on the sketch, and then this is the more finished rendering of that. And again, this is on the west side of the building. This is the academic section, secondary entrance, main gymnasium over here, and this is another rendering showing at that stage, at that stage how we were completing that. So, that's, that's, that's a synopsis of the DD documents, or the DD design at this point. This was presented, I think originally back in April or May.
Questions? Questions? Comments?
I emailed you, gentlemen, a list of some greater level of detail than we had right here that I'd like to see prior to us voting. So, you know, you saw the list, so I'm looking for, I'd like to see that information prior to the vote, because I want to make sure the number of my concerns are just, okay, hey, what's this? Because I know we had a lot of discussion of tweaks. I'm also particularly interested to find out how we're going to, the preservation of the floor, flooring to the tile floor, some of the detail work, because I'd like to get that before we sign off and commit. I hate to find out six months later, oh, well, we didn't, or next six months, a year or two from now, oh, well, we meant this when I was thinking something else. So, just so long as I can get that detail before.
Right, and remember that it's our intention to bring to the board a recommendation to approve the DD design at the August 4th board meeting. And prior to that, Mr. Silverman, we will get you that additional information that you requested.
I've got like 15 or 20 points, I don't kind of read them all out, so.
Do you anticipate, or does anyone on the team anticipate further changes? I mean, in addition to answering Mr. Silverman's questions, are there other, should we expect there to be any other, or is this what we're saying?
Yeah, I don't think, I don't, well, there were some changes that were made after this, and I think, you know, we've been kind of rolling with that, but in terms of significant changes to the, to the plan or to the exterior, no. It's, you know, as we go through the construction documents, there are always details, you know, particularly connection details between the old building and the new building, that kind of stuff that we work out as we're going through, but no major changes in terms of the volume or the mass of the building or in terms of the materiality. It's more, you know, finalizing some of the details, that's all.
What will we see at the August 4th board meeting? What are we, what are we going to be?
You will be asked to approve what you've seen tonight.
Uh huh.
But in addition to that, and at the same time, and that's one of the nice things about the procurement process that we've worked, that we've selected, we're also concurrently right now working with our construction manager, Gilbane, the Gilbane Company, negotiating with them at the guaranteed maximum price. Remember, that will be the fixed price that it costs the school district to construct this building, and from that, then they will go out and do bidding, right? They'll bid the project after we reach agreement on a guaranteed maximum price. If the bidding prices go up, they're responsible for those additional costs. If they go, if they're less, we get to have that savings. So, at the same time that Gary and his design team have been working and refining the DD drawings, we've been also, the design team and PMC have been working with Gilbane to develop this guaranteed maximum price. It's really a negotiation process, and we will be, the intention is to bring to the board a, a recommendation for a guaranteed maximum price at the August 4th meeting.
And, yes. Go ahead, finish your stuff. Go ahead, I just, so, the GMPs are going to be itemized?
Well, it will be a, a document that breaks out what the various costs are in, in, in different areas, yes. It will be an itemized list of, here are the major components of the building, here's what their costs are. The most important thing for us will be, of course, the total, right?
Right.
And that will be the fixed number that this, will cost to build this building.
It's a facilitated process. It isn't just the price. The documents, we have GMP documents already together today. Even though DD is, for, we're asking for approval, isn't really the final project. It's when you get to the GMP that you're actually, actually approving what we're going to be buil, building. And the DD is just a point in time in the process. So, what the GMP will include, and I don't know if you recall, it's probably almost two years ago when we presented this, it's based on, first of all, a series of basic, basis documents with Gary's team has done, which are quite complete and quite detailed. They're done by not only Gary's team, but also his, his engineers. It also includes an item called design intent statements, because remember, these documents aren't 100% construction documents. So, they identify all the, itemize all the items that aren't on the documents to make sure we bought those. It also includes a detailed cost estimate. It will also include a thing called assumptions and clarifications, which we will go through in minute detail with the construction manager, assuming things like, you know, where the permit is paid, what certain items, to make sure that we're not taking on risk. So, the GMP isn't just an itemized list or just some documents, it's a detailed piece. And in, and that point in time is what you know you're going to be buying. DD is only a point in time that we're looking at right now.
Yeah, I was just going to say, it's probably worth mentioning for those people who are listening, and one of the reasons we may not have so many questions right now is because we've been going through this over and over and over again, which is great. I mean, that's, you'd hate for it all to be a big surprise at the end. But a lot of what you've shown tonight is the outside skin of the building, and I think is worth saying, I think it looks beautiful. You guys have done a really nice job of, of being both proactive and reactive and responding to what people have, have, some of the concerns. I think we pay a lot of attention to the front face of the building on Cedar. The, I actually, at the beginning, thought the back was sort of boring. I think you've made it much more interesting. I think the sides, I think the materiality you've used is, you've done a real nice job, so I think it's worth at least saying that.
Well, we have several GMP documents that we will have to accept, and we will accept them, will we approve them all on August 4th?
You know, that's a really good question. We've been, we've been working with the construction manager. There are some elements we really need to make sure that by the August 4th, GMP, that we, we get approval. One is the steel, the site, and the concrete, because they're long lead items and they, they affect the schedule. We're not sure that we will be there for the rest of the GMP, and we've always, always allowed for that. So, we've always kind of, Ron, you're kind of voicing what we've told you before, we may have two GMPs, two more GMPs, or if we can get this pulled together, we would try to get a single GMP, so we're completely done at August 4th. But I, I can't tell you at this point in time, because we're still in the process of negotiation.
Our target is August 4th, but as Steve is saying, we're, that's what we're shooting for. We may not make it for all of it.
I've got a couple other ones that are sort of facilities, but not necessarily GMP-related. If we could get, I know, because we're, at the last meeting, we're in the home stretch on the, where all of the athletic teams are playing and practicing, if we get a finalized or more current list so that wherever, where, as much as is buttoned down as possible.
I've got to tell you, the, our new athletic director and our high school principal have done an outstanding job. We had met with them approximately a week ago. Dwight, who's the athletic director, put this incredible matrix that shows each team where it will practice and over the next two years, and where it will play its competition. And it's a really incredible document. They're just finishing it up now, and as soon as that, I would say maybe in about a week, Dwight is going to have that finished. And they, I got to tell you, I really have to commend both Zorba and Dwight on, on the job that they did to put, pull this together. It's the first time that really was looked at holistically and just answering those questions, because we had those same questions. Okay, where is this one? He's done a really great job, and he's also, Dwight has really kind of evaluated a lot of the spaces that we already have, and is actually saving us a little bit of money for practicing and stuff like that. So, I have to really commend Zorba and Dwight on this.
And then, obviously, then we need to get that to communication so that we can get folks to know for where the, where the games are, and for parents as far as picking kids up and things like that. I believe also, the, I guess as well, if we could, I know we've had it before, the milestones, different milestones and decision dates. I know we've had, if we could see how that goes, both with the high school project as well as now moving to the middle school, and then also, I know, just getting into the weeds, the, sort of our windows, if you will, on any of the design alternates, so that we, as a board, can know, okay, we have, you know, if we're, if the, if we're going to make the options for some of the, what the lead times are, because I know some of them, they're very early, whether or not if we want to do a design alternate or not. The other ones, we've got more lead time, so if we could get that, all those on sort of one timeline, it'd be great. And then I, I think we're beginning demolition of the science wing this week?
Next week.
Next week?
Mm-hmm.
Which then, okay, then my next question to that was, are still some of the components, some of the archival materials that were in the courtyard, some of the stonework and things are still, I've driven by, seeing the fence, the hockey memorial, the monolith that we call, the one that, those are still there. So, I was wondering when some of those items are being moved out of the construction zone?
Okay.
Those were it?
We'll get those.
Anything else?
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. So, you get to go, you get to stay.
I stay.
So, yeah, while, while we're changing here, I'll do a quick introduction. Mike Austin is joining us. Mike is an associate with the Thompson Heinle Law Firm in their Energy Division, and he's going to be doing a presentation on power purchase agreements. And a little background, remember, as we have been designing the building, one thing that's been important is sustainability, energy usage. In fact, we, as a, as a district that belongs to the Ohio Schools Facilities Commission, the Expedite Electrical Partnership Program, we're required to meet what's called LEED Silver, and LEED is the Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design. It's a certification program that's sponsored by the US Green Building Council and has various levels. We have to meet the LEED Silver level as, being a part of the House Schools Facilities Commission program. And in addition to that, there is certainly a very big interest within the community about energy efficiency, sustainability, the use of renewable energy and so forth. And our design does allow, the current design that, that Mr. Baylog just went through, does allow for the future potential of adding solar panels to the building. The roof has been designed in such a way that they can be easily accommodated, there's been structure addition, added for the added weight, the electrical system has been set up in such a way that the tie-in for that power can be made. Keep in mind, though, the project budget and the project right now does not include the, the addition of, of a, of a solar system, okay? What Mike is here to talk about, and this is a topic that has come up through, through the community, through the Sustainable Working Group, is this idea of being able to utilize a, a power purchasing model to obtain a solar system for the high school. There are some, Mike's going to explain how these agreements work, talk a little bit about some of the issues that the board may want to consider in thinking about whether the district would want to pursue such an agreement. And it's a complicated topic. We've worked with Mike to try to streamline the presentation, but, and I think he'll do a good job of explaining it. So, I'm going to turn it over to Mike, and then we'll go from there.
Thanks, Steve. Unfortunately, being a lawyer, my presentation is mostly words, not pictures, so I apologize in advance for that. As Steve mentioned, the district, in connection with the construction project, is considering the possibility of a rooftop solar installation. Just for some background on terminology, these types of installations are what's known as distributed generation, which is generation resources that are close to the customers that are going to use them. You can contrast that with utility-scale generation, which is sort of large centralized generation resources, what, that you traditionally think of, like a power plant or something like that. And just to get us all on the same page, I wanted to run through some of the assumptions that we used in performing this analysis, and that is that the installation will be relatively small. I think the number that, that we had used in performing our analysis was that it would be roughly on the order of 15% of the energy needs of the high school. And then, as Steve mentioned, the other assumption that we used is that the district does not have, in its current budget, the, the funds to contribute to the upfront capital expense of purchasing, owning, maintaining solar panels on the roof of the high school. That said, there is a contractual vehicle that would enable a solar installation with minimal upfront capital investments, and that's a vehicle that's known as a third-party power purchase agreement. And the nuts and bolts of this agreement are that a third-party solar developer would come in, the third-party solar developer would construct, install, maintain, operate, and own the solar installation on the roof of the high school. In exchange, the district would agree to purchase the energy output of that installation over a rather lengthy period of time, so something usually on the order of 15 to 20 years. So, that's what the district would be doing in exchange for this company installing the solar panels. As you can see from the slide, this does address certain tax issues. You know, there is a federal tax credit that we'll talk about later. The district, being a tax-exempt entity, is not able to take advantage of that. Unfortunately, this structure does introduce a variety of regulatory and just being the long-term nature of the contract, contractual concerns that we wanted to run through. This is just kind of an overview of what some of those issues are, and we'll get into some more detail on each of these. From a regulatory perspective, these types of contracts raise both federal and state regulatory issues, and that's because of the nature of, of what they are, which are, is essentially sales of electric energy. As you can see, most third-party power purchase agreements result in two sales of electricity, may not necessarily be the case here. But first, the solar developer will sell the electricity generated by the solar installation to the host, in this case, the district. And then the second, which is more theoretical, is that the host would then sell any excess energy back to the local utility, and that sale is what's known as a sale for resale. The Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, or FERC, typically has jurisdiction over sales of electricity for resale or wholesale sales, and those sales are governed by the Public Utilities Regulatory Policy Act, PERPA. As Steve mentioned, it's, it's complicated, there's kind of an alphabet soup here. There's kind of an alphabet soup here to this. But basically, PERPA requires utilities to purchase the excess energy output of certain small generators, including solar installations. And it requires those utilities to pay those small generators a rate that's known as the avoided cost rate. Now, avoided cost rate refers to the utilities' avoided costs by virtue of that resource being on the system. FERC has typically, has historically ignored these types of customer generator situations where it's a small installation and has allowed those types of customer generators to be compensated at the full retail rate, which is typically a much higher rate than the avoided cost rate. This is an issue that is one area of significant uncertainty and something that is subject to change in the future. As we mentioned, given the size of this installation, this is likely not to be an issue, but it is something that the district should consider as it, as it considers moving forward. The state issue, state regulatory issues, I think are a more immediate concern. The Public Utilities Commission of Ohio, or PUCO, regulates all sales of electricity to end users. And typically, those who make such sales are deemed to be public utilities or electric utilities, subject to PUCO regulations. Now, to date, third-party solar developers have not been regulated by the PUCO and have just kind of been allowed to exist in an unregulated state. So, you know, these, these are issues that have not been addressed. It's likely that at some point, they will be regulated in some form or another, and it's really unclear right now what that will mean. It could mean that the third-party developers are treated as electric utilities. And in Ohio, electric utilities operate in statutorily defined exclusive territories. So what that means is that if the third party is deemed an electric utility, it would be encroaching on another utility's territory, which could invalidate its existence, basically. A lot of states are wrestling with this. Arizona is currently a large solar producer that is, is looking into these issues and trying to decide how to, how to treat them. Florida is kind of a notable example of a state that has a lot of solar that does not allow these types of arrangements, these third-party PPAs. So, you know, this is, this is something that is really up in the air right now and is a significant source of uncertainty. Just to reiterate, you know, federally, at a federal level and a state level, there are significant issues that, that would need to be followed and, and could significantly impact the, the third-party PPA. There are also certain marketing restrictions that are applied under the Federal Trade Commission's Green Guides. And these, these are a series of, of regulations that govern the ability to advertise the environmental attributes of, of solar installations, but also other environmental products. And essentially, if the solar developer retains the renewable energy certificates or RECs that are generated by virtue of this being a solar resource, then the district may be precluded from making certain statements about the environmental attributes of the system. It's somewhat unclear whether this would be a, a large impact for the district, given that it is a school district and not a business. But it is something where, you know, we would advise you to definitely proceed cautiously in any materials that you might want to put together, touting the virtues of a solar installation, which is something that a lot of hosts of installations want to do, is to tout the environmental attributes of them. Insurance issues is another area that, that is a, a major concern, particularly with regards to your existing insurance policies. One thing that you would want to do before entering into the third-party PPAs, make sure that the existence of an electric generator on the school site does not invalidate any existing insurance policies. You also want to look into whether the installation will raise your insurance premiums. And I think that that's been explored preliminarily, but it's something that, that could, could certainly increase the costs associated with the installation. And then the other aspect of this is you want to make sure that the local utility, in, in your case, FirstEnergy, doesn't require you to carry additional insurance to make sure that if there's any damage to its local distribution system, that those damages would be covered by an insurance policy carried by the district. The, contractually, you want to make sure that, that your contract accounts for the rate that you're going to be paid. And typically, the way that the solar developers will approach these, these types of agreements is, you know, they'll say, we're going to offer you a rate that is one cent less than what you're currently paying to your utility per kilowatt hour. The contract will then include a calculation method that takes into account other factors other than energy, other than, other than the rate that you actually are paying your utility per kilowatt hour. And occasionally, that can result in you actually paying more for the solar energy than what you had bargained for. So it's something to be careful about. What we would advise is that you either try to negotiate a fixed rate for the, for the, for the output of the installation and you just fix the rate over time, or you seek to index that to a publicly available resource, like the standard service offer rates that are published on the PUCO's website, and, and tie it to that so that you have some transparency there and are able to, to track where the rate is going. Net metering, and again, you know, just to stress, given the size of the installation, this, this is probably not an issue. But currently, the PUCO requires utilities to offer net metering, which is a practice that you get a per kilowatt, you get a kilowatt hour credit for each kilowatt hour of your excess generation that is sold back to the utility. Now, this is, this is what we talk about when we say the full retail rate for your excess energy. And, and this is a practice that has very recently come under increased scrutiny. The PUCO's requirement that net metering be offered is currently being challenged at the Ohio Supreme Court. The PUCO itself is actually also revising its regulations regarding net metering. So this is something that, you know, if you did go down this road and you were looking to increase the size of the solar installation, you would want to make sure that net metering is still available or is not, you know, going to imminently be, be changed to, to make sure that you're getting the full value of, of your investment. These types of arrangements will require you to do coordination with your local utility. It will allow you to sell excess energy back to the local, local utility, but you also want to make sure that you're not running afoul of any of their rules regarding connection of generating resources. So, you know, you want to be sure that you're in coordination, that you do this in coordination with FirstEnergy, and you want to make sure that you understand what the requirements would be before you enter into the third-party PPA, so that you can then negotiate with the solar developer about which party would have responsibility for making sure that those requirements are complied with. Just some, some other contractual issues that you want to consider, given that these, these agreements can last for 15 years or more. You know, you want to make sure that the PPA accounts for removal of the equipment, repair, a replacement of damaged facilities. With respect to your ability to move the equipment, this is, could be a significant issue, given that they're going on the roof of the high school. You know, you want to have the ability to repair any roof leaks or roof damage quickly. That may require taking the equipment down. You want to make sure that the agreement accounts for who is to pay for that. And, you know, you want to make sure that the contract addresses the regulatory risks that we talked about. You want to push as many, as much of that risk to the solar developer as possible. And then the last item is you want to make sure that the solar developer is a credit-worthy counterparty and one that is going to be around for the life of the agreement. We touched a little bit on bid procurement issues when we did this analysis. You know, essentially, what we want to make sure is that we follow the required bid procedures, but that's somewhat dependent on how the third-party PPA itself is viewed. It could be considered the purchase, it could be considered to just be a purchase of a utility service, which would not require bid procedures to be followed, or it could be viewed as more of a, a construction agreement, which would require bidding. You may want to consider following bid procedures regardless, so that you can more fully ensure that you get a credit-worthy counterparty on the other side of the PPA. We talked a little bit earlier about the federal solar investment tax credit. This is the tax credit that allows for a 30% credit on your, your federal taxes on the basis of the solar project placed into service in a taxable year. This credit is scheduled to expire as of December 31st, 2016, so it will be in place for approximately another year and a half. And then it's unclear whether that credit will be renewed or, or what the, what the case may be with it. You know, essentially, what, what I think the, the major points here are, is that there is a lot of risk associated with these agreements and that they are long-term agreements that could outlast the current regulatory environment. And these are all things that the district should consider prior to entering into a third-party PPA. Any questions or points of clarification?
I'm going to go into long rambling because I, so if I'm, if I'm understanding this correctly, a full PVA on our system would generate around, run the high school, what we're looking at doing, about 15% of our electricity. I believe from talking with Mr. Shigalas, if we have about a million dollar electric bill, if 40% of that's the high school, I'm just doing my math here, if 40% of it's a high school, and then 15% of this, of the array would generate 15% of our electricity, which would be $60,000 a year, then theoretically, if we were, if the solar PVA gave us a discounted rate of 10%, we would only be saving money on the, what we're not purchasing. So in reality, it's a whole, from a dollars and cents perspective, it'd be a very large amount of work to maybe save us six to 10, $12,000 a year. Is that, is my math?
Well, I didn't check your math. But I think that sounds about right.
Also, what I remember from asking previously, what we're seeing, or I guess, in solar technology, we're not seeing like a Moore's Law, where we're not seeing a doubling of the electricity generated from the cells. They're getting more efficient. What you're seeing is more, the, the cost of the cell, the erase is declining. Is that correct?
Mike, I'll let you.
Well, I can answer that. Yeah, because we asked, we asked our engineers that because we were concerned, gee, you know, five years from now, are they going to have more efficient cells? And they, they've explained to us, there isn't, there, there isn't going to be some major breakthrough to make the cells provide more electricity, but they, there will be breakthroughs in terms of the costs of the cells are coming down.
The economies of scale of Moore's Law. Then the other one, I guess, would be that, right, the, the tax credits don't apply to us because we're a nonprofit. So it would be, the issue ends up being then, and also the regulations, as much as, because it's unregulated, pretty much unregulated now, if we sign an agreement today, it's, it's quite possible that the state or the Fed could come in and say, oh, no, no, your agreement, that doesn't apply anymore. And then would that drive our costs up or what could hap, what would happen in that scenario? If we've got an agreement and we're good and we're saving our big $6,000 a year, and then the feds come down and say, oh, no, you can't do that, what would happen?
Well, well, obviously would depend on the, the hypothetical regulation or, or law. And, you know, I think it would also depend on what you're able, how much of that risk you're able to push off onto the solar developer. So, you know, if there is an increased cost associated with some unforeseen regulation, you know, does the district bear that cost? Is the district liable for a certain percentage of that cost? That's something that's fairly common in longer-term agreements of this nature. So, you know, our advice would just be to, to push as much of that risk off to the developer. I think the other, the other issue that comes up with that is, you know, a lot of these solar developers are relatively new businesses that are viable because of the tax credits associated with these installations and the lack of regulation associated with these agreements. So to the extent that those costs go up based on new regulations and the expiration of tax credits, will those parties be able to exist? And will the district have a solar installation that it's now responsible for operating and maintaining that previously was done by a third party?
Well, and if, if I remember in cover, and I, the, to get the, even if we wanted the credit, we would have to have this, would we have to have the system up and running by December 31st of 2016? Is that correct?
Yeah, it's placed into service by December 31st, 2016. Now, whether that means at a fully operational high school, that's probably not going to happen.
Because if we, if, if it, if it applied to us in that, in that situation, then we would almost have to make our decision almost now because of the lead time for construction. Is that correct?
Well, soon, yes. And that's, and that's one of the reasons for having the discussion at this particular juncture, that right now, there is still time to make a decision and say, yes, we would like to go in this direction, but that window's going to close fairly, fairly quickly.
To a high degree, it appears to me at least that we, if, for us to make a decision in the, in the short term, let's say the next six months, we're moving into a very, there's a lot of variables that we don't know about versus if we wait a little bit further out, hopefully the markets determine, you know, the, the regulations become more solidified. But the, from a dollars and cents standpoint, this isn't really going to move the needle for us. It's more of a philosophical and emotional reason as opposed to a pocketbook, if I'm, if I'm, if my understanding of the numbers is correct. Because it doesn't seem like this is really going to, it's not going to really save us a lot of money if we did it.
I mean, the only point I would take, I think you're right about that, but I, I think it's important to view it in the long term as well, that that, that savings is going to go up. I mean, chances of electricity rates dropping that are not renewable is slim. So we can assume that that $6,000 a year, or whatever that figure is, would, would only grow. It's still, your point is taken about.
What's the assumption that makes it grow?
That utility rates tend to go up.
I know, but that, that means that we were going to try to lock in a, a rate at, that's fixed?
Would it be fixed for 15 years or is it fixed per year?
I mean, it's fully negotiable, so it, it really depends on what you, what you could get. I mean, if you bid it out, you could bid for a fixed rate and, and say, we want, we want a fixed rate. How likely is it to get a, a fixed rate?
Yes.
Well, I mean, we've, we've had success negotiating fixed rates for, for public clients in the past.
But normally, do you wind up fixing it at a slightly higher value now with the, because of the assumption of the future? Or are you just that good at negotiating?
Well, my sense is that a lot of times, for the solar developer, they place a lot of value in having the public, the public visible installation at a public, so, you know, your, your roof is kind of good real estate for a solar development because it's going to be visible, a lot of people are going to see it, and it may be people who want to enter into this type of an agreement for their home or for their small business or something like that. So it's kind of good advertising, I think, for the solar developer. So you, you do have a certain amount of leverage in negotiation.
Can you give us a sense of who's out there?
It's, it's a pretty, pretty wide array.
I mean, are there hundreds of these developers out there or 10?
I would say it's probably closer to hundreds. I don't, I don't have an exact figure on that, but that's to all, you know, to every degree of, of sophistication that you can imagine.
And so you think there's hundreds that are playing in this market that we're in?
Well, I don't know about, you know, Northeast Ohio specifically, but, you know, you'll get, you'll get an array of, of solar developers that, that will, are around. You know, there's SolarCity, that's a large company and, and one of the more well-known. And then, you know, it could be people who, who this is a new business for them and they started it, you know, last month, and it's kind of a, more of a mom and pop type of operation.
Push into the, the risk you mentioned about if the tax credits go away and the, so you're dealing with a third party, the third party's liability as a company going forward. So then, if, let's say they don't make it. At that point, is there anything contractually, you're, you're doing a contract with that entity and that entity is no longer an entity, so how do you protect yourself in that? Because arguably, the school district should not be, in my opinion, should not be a situation of becoming a sales team of energy. This just isn't our expertise.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not a, I'm not a bankruptcy expert. Yeah, I mean, I'm not a bankruptcy expert. So I don't know what the particular implications of the solar developer just disappearing and going under. I don't know what your rights would be as a potential creditor. I don't know how the, if the installation would be viewed as an asset of the now-defunct solar developer, and whether you would have to go to bankruptcy to try to claim some right to that. I mean, it really opens up kind of a whole Pandora's box of legal issues that, you know.
Just to note, the panels themselves belong to the developer?
Yes.
For 15 years?
And typically, typically, at the conclusion of the contract, there's an option to purchase at the then-market rate of, for the panels. Or, you know, sometimes the developer will just walk away at the conclusion of the term of the contract, and you'll own them for free, or, you know.
In effect, we're leasing our roof space to a generator, who then we guarantee that we will purchase their electricity.
Yes.
Pretty much what we're.
Yeah, you could think of it that, or you could think of it as a long-term financing vehicle where, you know, you're going to finance the construction costs of this by agreeing to buy the energy output of it.
So sort of a circular thing going on here. Not that, from the analysis, it doesn't look like we're going to get into a situ, we would get into a situation of selling back energy. But let's just say for a moment, so the, that company owns the panels, they're in charge of the maintenance of the panels. So once, then we become the seller, do we own? Are they still maintaining their own, the energy is going back to them again? Are they in charge of the entire cycle there?
That is another, that's another point of negotiation. It can be that any excess energy is owned by the solar developer for sale to the utility. And the utility would then turn around and sell that energy to its customers. Or you can negotiate that you'll purchase the entire output, and then you'll sell the excess energy back to the utility. And it would typically appear as a bill credit.
I'm sorry, in repeating something you said, we're a nonprofit, but how would we be, if we're selling? That's something that is unclear, what the legality of that is. Is that correct?
I think that's a fair, I think that's a fair assumption, as to, as whether you would have to pay, you know, there are certain utility taxes associated with the sale of energy that are independent of income taxes. It's kind of a new ground. Yeah, it's something that has not been fully.
Well, see, the thing that, if we're only generating 15%, we've got a lot of room to generate additional energy, I think, without selling. Now, can we use that? I mean, is there a cap on how much? Is it 15%? And everything over 15% goes, is excess?
Well, it depends on your.
I want to make sure it's clear. That 15% is because of the amount of roof area that we have available to us. To, the roof area, putting panels on that roof area only will generate 15% of the electrical needs of the high school. We would have to find more areas, more space. We could never, even if we put panels across the entire site, that would not generate 100% of our electrical needs for that high school. When we say 15%, it's basically 15% of the high school's electrical needs.
I understand that. What I'm trying to get at is what is excess? I mean.
The likelihood of excess would be not happen, would not happen. You're absolutely right, Ron. There really isn't excess. These are only hypothetical. But the idea of us having excess electrical energy is, it wouldn't happen. It would not happen.
Am I correct that no other school districts have this that we know of?
I'm not aware of any, of any school districts that have this.
Public.
Public school districts, yes.
Thank you. But, so many public school districts have built new buildings in the very recent past, right? Why not? Why don't they?
Don't know.
Don't know.
It's a legitimate question to ask why. It's clearly not something that people wouldn't have thought of. Boy, that was a bunch of negatives in there. Clearly, people would have thought of that.
There are public school districts, though, who have, who bought and paid for their own arrays on top of their buildings. Okay, so there, it's, but we don't know of a public school district that went into one of these power purchase agreements.
Okay, all right. Well, one sort of unrelated but related question, because let's just say we came to the conclusion that this wasn't the way we wanted to go. Is there a, is there, has there been a thought given to having a small array for educational purposes only?
We have considered that.
And is that within the realm of possibility?
It's something that can be done, you know, at almost any time. It doesn't, it doesn't, it's not connected necessarily to the construction schedule of the high school or any building. Frankly, we could do a demonstration solar array at almost any of our buildings. High school would probably be the easiest one now, once that building's constructed.
And I, were we talking about the array being on the old part of the building as well as the new, or not?
We are still, we have asked that question. It's an excellent, and it actually was asked by the sustainability. We haven't gotten the, engineers are now checking the structural capacity of the existing building portions.
So let's say the structural capacity is there, but that roof is older than the new roofs that will happen. So what happens if you have to do something to the roof underneath the, underneath the panels?
That's a challenge, right? That's one of the challenges you would have, is who's responsible to move those solar panels out of the way? And what's the cost of that's going to be? Who's going to bear that cost? Those are all things that you would hope to structure in an agreement. And as Mike has said, we'd want to push as much of that cost and as much of that risk off to the solar developer as we could within the confines of the negotiations.
I appreciate all those times that you're saying this is what we want to do. But let's just put it on the table that what they want to do is going to be the opposite of that, right?
Yes, that is absolutely correct.
Or the cost of that, they'll put into your rate. So instead of a penny, maybe it's only half a cent. So, yes, the more, the more they're responsible for, let's say, we feel strongly that, let's say, when we have, and even new roofs have to be repaired. That's part of the life of a new roof. And let's say we want to do a repair even on the new roofs. The question is, is if we take down those solar panels, they're not producing electricity now, who paid to move them? Who, what, who gets, the loss of income now is for that, for that solar person or company? And then put them back up, there are costs associated with that. The more you put costs onto the solar PPA, obviously, the less savings we're going to get on the rate side.
And if we were to do, just ballpark, the cost of doing a PVA array on the new construction? What would be the, if we want to do it?
If we want to do it ourselves?
Yeah, we want to do it ourselves.
We have a.
The estimate that our engineers have been working with for this, for this analysis that we gave Mike was about $1 million.
So to a degree, I mean, for the PVA folks, what they're looking for, it's like an institutional. They figure, hey, we put an array in, we want to, you know, they figure out their cost of the, the cost of the capital, they figure out their rate of return. So to a degree, we could almost figure out what it would cost us.
But they have another, they have the tax, 30% tax. So they get, they get another benefit that we don't get.
Exactly. So it'd actually be cheaper, it would be cheaper for them to install the array than it would be for us.
That's, I mean, that's really one of the reasons that these agreements exist.
That's right.
Because of the tax.
That's right. You're leveraging their ability to, that's right.
Mike, how many of these have you negotiated?
I would say, I've worked on several.
Several?
Yeah.
So what, how did?
I mean, there's not that many out there.
How did you manage the risk in the ones that you have negotiated?
Well, you know, it's difficult. You kind of just push back on the terms that the, typically, the solar developer will bring their form of the agreement, which can be good or bad. But, you know, you'll, you push back on their terms, and you try to make sure that, you know, things like moving the solar panels or temporarily taking them down, those are, those are big issues for the developers because that's how they're making their money back, is by having the panels in place and producing energy. So those are, those are areas where, if you can give a little bit in those areas, then you can typically get something back out on the negotiation of the regulatory risks, for example. Or the desire to fix the rate, for another example. So that's, you know, it's really, I hate to sound crass about it. It's kind of horse trading on these agreements, particularly with the lack of regulatory background just kind of governing some of the basic terms of it.
I mean, at the end of the day, if we try to be too aggressive, what's going to happen is, we're not going to be able to reach agreement with somebody, right? They're not going to, they're not going to want to work with us. So to reach agreement, you've got to do, as Mike said, there's got to be a little bit of horse trading in there somehow.
Is, from a decision-making standpoint, what, if we, if the board's like, hey, okay, in the next six months to a year, what would be the motive, what would be the motivator or the catalyst for us to say, okay, you know what, let's really make a decision in the next six months or a year versus waiting to see the regulatory market become more solidified? What would be the rationale to go sooner versus later?
It's a tough question. I mean, I think the rationale for going sooner versus later, I think for going sooner, it would just be a, I think it would just, the only reason to go sooner would be just a very deep commitment to having solar associated with the new high school.
But it's not going to, from a, I mean, I keep, philosophically, I love the idea. I think it'd be great for us to do that. I really liked us to do that. The flip side is, is that it's a big roll of the dice. And unfortunately, the economics of it, it's a big roll of the dice, but not for big dollars and savings. It's really, it's more for a philosophical argument than it is from a financial argument. Would be, this is at least my take on it.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know the particular finances of it. But I think it's really, you know, balancing the desire to be an early adopter of this technology and the commitment to solar with the regulatory risks and other risks associated with being an early adopter.
Mike, just philosophically, there's also the environmental impact and the good neighbor.
That's what I mean when I, that's what I'm saying.
I just wanted to make sure you said those.
That's.
From an opportunity, Steve, from an opportunity cost standpoint, in terms of the actual physical installation, does it push out our timeline in any ways? Does it impact other construction in any ways?
No, we've talked to Gil Bane about it. They've done this before. They're, they're prepared to have this third-party come on to our construction site and work with their forces while the project is underway. So they're not concerned about that.
And the notion of mixed-mode energy distribution is, are there any overheads associated with having, rather than a single energy? You know, you're parsing that out. Is there, are there control issues? Are there overhead issues of any kind?
Well, they're responsible for maintaining the system that's in place. I don't know enough about it to know if there are any other sort of maintenance costs, those kinds of things. You certainly have to deal with two bills, right? Now, instead of just working with FirstEnergy, you've got to work with this third-party, some clerical issues.
I'm more interested in the old stereo days, when something went wrong with your stereo, and everyone pointed to each other and said, it was, no, it's his part, it's his part? Is there any of that?
You know, potentially, when, as we've been talking about with the roof, right? I mean, there's some potential for that kind of thing to go on and.
It's not a real concern.
No more than what Mike's already talked about. Yeah, in terms of the electrical system, right? If, is it FirstEnergy's fault, or is it the solar system's fault? I don't know how to answer that.
Yeah, I don't either.
I don't know how to answer that.
What does the relationship between this provider and FirstEnergy look like? Do we have to negotiate that as well?
Well, I mean, they essentially have no contractual relationship with one another.
So we're in the middle of them?
Yes.
That's probably fair to say.
Does FirstEnergy do any solar arrays? Are they all, they're all carbon-based? They're not doing anything solar? I mean, it would be in their interest almost to.
Well, I think some of the utilities are exploring utility scale. So what they, what the utilities are concerned about is the planning of their system. They want to have resources that they know when they're going to be online and when they're going to be offline. And these, typically, these types of arrays and, you know, wind and things like that are intermittent resources. So there's no, there's no way to predict when they're going to be online or offline. The utilities want to kind of account for that risk by having them centralized in larger, larger arrays. They can know, okay, we have a, you know, a 5-megawatt solar installation in Indiana. We know it's going to be cloudy in Indiana. We better have one of our coal plants or our natural gas plants online that day and ready to go.
So even, so even if they were, even if FirstEnergy was getting into the solar business, our project would be way too small for them to even think about doing.
Right, they don't do.
No, they.
They don't do power purchase agreements.
FirstEnergy, you know, as being the, your utility that you interconnect with would be precluded from entering into this type of an agreement with you.
Gotcha.
Thank goodness it's never cloudy here. Steve Zanoni, one thing I wanted to check with you, because it's sort of an interesting comment you made. Did I hear you right that the engineers said? Would I be expressing it correctly if I said the engineers said that solar panels have pretty much reached their maturity in terms of efficiency?
Well, close. What, this is in response to what Eric Silverman asked, was, is there some breakthrough technology on the horizon that they see that, that the generating capacity of panels is going to, you know, you used.
Moore's Law.
Moore's Law. Well, their answer was, we don't see anything. Yes, the panels have been getting more efficient in kind of an incremental way, but nothing dramatic that they saw coming on the horizon. That doesn't mean that two years from now, something could happen that no one predicted. But, but they did not see anything dramatic. Certainly, costs are coming down. Your production costs are coming down slightly over time.
But let's just say that assumption's wrong. The panels are the panels. It's not, we wouldn't expect to negotiate into the agreement that they're going to keep upgrading the panels with the most current technology? Or am I wrong about that?
No, they're going to put the panels on that they have today. And then those will be the panels that you have for the life of the agreement.
So I have nothing to base what I'm about to say on. So please don't, I don't want to sound like an expert, and I'm not. But it's hard to imagine technology being stagnant. Because if they feel like they've reached their peak, then they're going to go a different direction. They're going to say, this is just not efficient enough, we need a different. That's, that is the way technology moves. So I mean, it's sort of an interesting, and I'm not picking on your statement, by the way, Steve.
No, no. But I do recall what Evan, Evan, because we asked Evan this very directly. And we also asked Jim.
And he was not in any way, shape, or form suggesting that technology was going to be static.
Static.
And that somebody isn't working really hard right now to try to find a way to make solar panels more efficient.
It wasn't going to be Moore's Law, which every so many year and a half, you double your capacity.
He just wasn't aware that on the horizon, there was some new technology brewing that was going to make these panels dramatically more efficient in the next year, six months, two years.
And realistically, I'm not necessarily saying that's what would happen, but possibly someone would find a different way to harness solar. I mean, that's, anyway, again, that's just, that's my philosophical.
What we hear is that, and what I've heard from various industry groups, is that the innovation investment right now is in storage. So that's where they're looking to move this forward, is.
Yeah, it's not that they're storing their innovation.
Right, they're, yeah, sorry. It's not, it's not in deep freeze. No, that, you know, they're looking to be able to store the output and make, the energy output of the solar installations could be stored and then used as needed, rather than, you know.
And that's particularly important, given the intermittent nature of solar generation, right?
Exactly.
Getting pretty good with those phrases, aren't I?
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
We're confused now. Well, I think it's, it's tough to figure out, you know, the windows that we have. Well, I think it's tough to figure out, you know, the window that we have is a fairly small window, and everybody's a little bit for us, and that our, it's not going to put a dent in our cost that really, you know, over 15 years, if we're talking about $5,000, that's only $75,000.
Well, I think the issue, to me, the question is being, do we have it for opening day 2017? Or do we keep this as an, you know, I think that's sort of, is the rationale to make a decision in the short term? I don't know that there's the benefit for us, again, aside from the emotional and the philosophical and the environmental, yeah, there's a reason to do it sooner than later. From a financial and regulatory standpoint, I don't know that that's the case. I mean, the issue also for us, I think, I get the impression from, we don't have to make the decision today, but I think it's definitely something we want to continue to explore and research, and if we find the, when the numbers are going to really start working, unless we want to roll the dice. I guess that's the question, do we roll the dice or do we go with the numbers?
Well, I think it probably, and this is not a real popular thing to say, but why not, is the, there has to be some way of judging the impact on the carbon footprint, the impact, the true environmental impact of these things. They have a, your words right here, an emotional appeal, because people all sell their power and wind power. But if the idea is, what do we want to do that's going to have real impact? Not a real, something we can ever advertise, but something that really has impact, then there's got to be a way to look at the different possibilities and say, which make the most sense? Which really have the most effect? Not which has the most PR value? And personally, I'm less interested in the PR value.
But you're not looking, and you're not looking for an action from us today to say, hey, yay or nay?
No, absolutely not.
But if we, but if we did want to have, but the flip side is, if we wanted to have it for 2017, we'd have to be making a decision in the next, like, okay, if we wanted to have something in November 2017, when would we have to make our decision to begin the process and then begin installation?
Yeah, next few months.
Okay.
Okay.
So just a reminder, in these facility presentations, we have typically allowed for public comment.
Yeah, we are.
Very good.
That's where we are.
Okay.
Any of the public want to make a couple of comments? Or, okay. Step up, state your name, and you have five minutes.
Alan Wilkinson, 1286 Yellowstone. I'm not the expert on this one, or I won't pretend to be. There are three people on the SWG that would be, would benefit a great deal from processing these thoughts tonight. These are pretty much on the risk side, and they're important to hear, but I think miss some of the benefit side. You know, you talked about the idea, does this third party, the third party really is a go-between, between deep pockets of money and installing the hardware. So this in-between company is the thing that you're worried about surviving. The deep pockets people get their tax credit as soon as it comes online, as soon as you commission it. Their tax credit's available to them. They can defer it over a number of years if they want or whatever, but it's already there. So there's not something that goes away, and it's not something that this in-between company gets, but the in-between company lives off from taking care of the system over time. There probably is, and I don't know this for sure, but there probably is some kind of commission upfront, and those commissions, if they weren't doing these over and over again, they wouldn't be getting these commissions over and over again, but I believe the companies are set up to survive based on maintaining the systems. And they're getting, they're getting value out of that cash flow that you're giving them, and they're getting part of that to operate or maintain their operations. So I don't think the risk of their going away is nothing special. But the other part is, there's just so many details that three SWG members really could give you a deeper perspective. I guess that issue about technology, really, right now, we're hitting, at least listening to Mario, we're hitting the level of diminishing returns on a decrease in cost, because they've increased, you know, scale of production, and they've increased or decreased the cost of installation. So right now, we're hitting, we've, over the last four or five years, reaped huge benefits from reduced cost of installing, and that's, that decrease is diminishing now. And so in some senses, that's, that's already happened, and that's to your benefit. And so, so I guess I probably don't want to stick my neck out more than that, but I think if you really want to make this decision carefully, you need to have those folks sitting at a table discussing, perhaps with the attorney here at the same time, so you can go back and forth and compare the issues.
I'm short, sorry. My name is Malia Lewis. I had three small points. The interior floor plans for the design development drawings appear pretty much unchanged over the past few months with regard to CTE spaces, and I wanted to know if the architectural team has had any interactions with Mr. Calendar, now that he's officially on salary. And when you talked about impact of photovoltaic arrays on the roof, it occurs to me that we might have greater environmental and carbon footprint impact with the new building with a full geothermal system compared to partial geo and PVs on the roof, because from a dollars and cents perspective, the PVs may not be a big enough improvement on our expenses and on our environmental impact, whereas if those, whether it be dollars or brain cells, get put towards the geo, full geothermal, that will have a significant impact on the energy usage of the building over the lifetime of the system. That's it, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, Steve, you know that those comments, right?
I do. Yes, I did.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
On May 5th, our ballot issue levy went down in defeat, and so we have been asking our administration to do some analysis for us, to help us in our deliberations and thinking about when it's appropriate and feasible for us to go on the ballot again. The way school is funded, thanks to House Bill 920, we'll have to go at some point. We can't live without it, and if we want to maintain the same kind of quality that we have now, and improve on it actually, then we have to, we'll have to go on the ballot. So this conversation is, one, a presentation by the administration in terms of what's doable in terms of where we are, you know, the, we do, we do have more information. For example, we know that the city of Cleveland Heights is going to go on the ballot in November for, it looks like an income tax for like a quarter of a percent or something like that, and we'll probably say a little bit more about that later on. But if we could have the superintendent and the treasurer give us some overview in terms of what the implications are from a financial standpoint of where we are today.
All right, I have a handout for you.
Thank you.
I'm going to start just by reminding everyone of the, kind of the history here. Take both pages. We did pass our last operating levy in November of 2011, and you'll remember that that levy was calculated to last three years at the time, so that would have put us back on the ballot in November of 2014. Then there were some things that happened during the course of that levy cycle, you know, some continued savings that we were able to accumulate. Also, the employees did take a pay freeze during that period of time, and we had teacher salaries that were spread over 12 months rather than the 10, as they were previously paid. So that allowed us to make the levy last an additional year, so that would have been November of 2015. However, as Mr. Register mentioned, the city of Cleveland Heights indicated early on their need for additional money and that they were likely going to go on in November. So the levy committee actually recommended that we go on in May, and as Mr. Register also mentioned, you know, that did fail. So the question becomes, and what we were asked to do is, is kind of come up with some options or what are options? And obviously, the option is that we could go back in November, along with the city, which we tried to avoid the first time around, or we could make, as Ms. Peppler mentioned during the joint boards meeting, several millions of dollars of reductions. And so what we've prepared for you tonight is what those reductions might look like or what we would propose to you, that that might look like. You're going to remember that back in May, we reduced about 10 positions. We riffed employees then and permanently eliminated some positions. We also, around that same time, made some changes to the preschool program, so we reaped some savings there. And so what we've done moving forward is, any vacancies, and Mr. Lombardo is here from Human Resources to discuss this if need be, but as time has gone on, any vacancies that we've had, we have left unfilled, and then we've had the Ed Services team and the Business Services team really do an analysis to kind of tell us, how can we absorb the work of those positions and those people? So we do have a list here, it's the second page, where both those positions that have already been reduced, and also vacancies that we would recommend not filling for the upcoming school year, to the tune of 48.2 FTE, and that savings would give us approximately $3.7 million annually. We also have some other reductions, and again, these reductions, these staff people you'll see are a combination of teaching staff, counselors, social workers, office staff, And in addition to those staff savings that we would recommend or that we would suggest if the board wanted to consider delaying the levy until next calendar year, we have some other non-salary items that are in the short summary page that preceded that one. And, well, I guess supplemental contracts could be considered a salary item, but we do have a supplemental contract reduction of $179,935. We are also, through the course of the budget preparation for this year, reducing material supply budgets across the board at 10%, which would give us another $375,000 in savings. Our new IT management group, Epiphany, are recommending or proposing that they can reduce professional services around IT to the tune of about $360,000. And then, speaking of utilities, we are in the Ohio Schools Council Consortium, and natural gas, we know that we're going to be able to see some savings annually, or at least in the next school year from that, of about $340,000. So the staff proposals, along with these non-salary items, just under $5 million in proposed savings that we believe that we can make happen, and with that, that's the, that's kind of the target number that we were looking for in order to delay the levy yet another year and still be able to come back to the voters next year with some, you know, equivalent kind of a mileage in terms of what we had in the previous levy. So, and I'll punt over to the superintendent for any comments on that.
So I know the question is, what would this do to our instructional programs? And so at the end of this year, we completed a program evaluations, and we're still in our strategic planning process, and those pieces, we're making sure that our programs, we're prioritizing what programs are important to us. You stated CTE, our IB programs, our STEM programs, so we want to make sure that those programs will not be compromised in any way. So we believe that with these reductions and of our expenditures, and that we're going to do more with less, but we're not going to compromise our academic programs for our students.
And obviously, the last comment I'll make, and then, you know, we'll take any questions that you would have, is, you know, we would continue to try to look for ways to streamline as the process moves forward, again, tied to the strategic plan, tied to the move of the high school down to the Wiley campus, you know, because there are some other things that we still need to compensate for or deal with, you know, the, every move we make in the way of trying to save more money seems to, we seem to have issues in the other direction, one being that the state biennial budget, and we talked about that the last meeting, eliminated our tangible personal property tax reimbursement. That's about $250,000 a year that we would look to address in some way. And also, the Ed Choice scholarships and vouchers that, you know, were actually, the amount of money was increased in the last biennial budget, and, you know, we have some additional students taking advantage of those. So something else that we would have to address moving forward in trying to continue to streamline and look for ways to save money.
So the list that we have here, we would be increasing class sizes in certain places, right?
Some, yes.
Can you give us a little bit of idea of how that looks?
In some of our classes, for example, our special ed programs, the number of students may have gone up, two or three students per class, not near to the maximum, but in some classes.
What is, what would that mean? Give us an idea of what.
So, for example, 12, you want to come up, 12 of?
There are certain state requirements in terms of instructional ratios in classrooms for students with disabilities. So in some of our situat, you know, some of our school settings, we can change a little bit of staffing, but still stay below what the state guideline is. So none of the changes would result in us going above that.
So if we think about the class sizes now, we're moving from five to seven, something like that?
It could be like that. Some of our classes are where you have, you can have 12 students with special needs in a classroom, and we may have eight or nine, and it goes up to a 10 or 11 or something like that. But we would never set up a scenario where we would exceed that. So.
And again, many of these vacancies that you see here are the result, because you do see the location of the employees on the spreadsheet as well, are high school staff. So this is, some of this is driven by the relocation of the existing high school with that amount of square footage and that staff down to the Wiley campus.
So when we move back to the high school, we'll have to pick them up again?
Well, I would argue, no.
No, no.
I'm just, just, listen.
And the new high school is, will be a smaller footprint than the current one is.
Right.
So I think the, I think the assumption, at least on my part, and I think on everyone's part, is that any reductions that we would make as we move here would be permanent and would stay.
And then also the other options that are there for students now, too. So, you know, with the new College Credit Plus, more students have the option of taking courses on college campuses. So, you know, the days of students all be housed in one big schoolhouse, those days are gone, and so students now are really taking advantage of online courses and taking other courses outside the walls of a traditional high school.
But let's not over-sugarcoat this, because I mean, there's, some people, some human beings in this district will lose their job because of the decisions we make here. Some people who would have had jobs available to them will not have jobs available to them. So I appreciate the spirit of what you're saying, but I don't want to over-sugarcoat this, because this isn't a good thing, and those people who come to speak to us, who seem to feel so vindicated by the loss of the levy, people are losing their jobs here.
I think, and to follow up on that, I agree entirely with that, that it is, I think we can be as smart as we can be about it. I think that we can try to have as little impact as possible on the students, but it will have an impact, and I think the community needs to know that. I mean, this is what happens. You don't pass a levy.
You don't pass a levy, the class sizes do get bigger. There are less teachers, there's 48 less positions, there are less counselors, there are less security monitors. But, you know, I mean, our kids are still going to be safe, they're going to be getting a great education, we're going to do everything we can about that, but it's just, that's the case. They will, they will feel this, the students will feel it, the staff will feel it, the community will ultimately feel it, and that's, and again, I think we can do it pretty gracefully. I think, I mean, this looks reasonable, what it's been described and everything, I think it can be done as well as it can be done, but I think it's important that the community realize that this is not, it will not go unnoticed. It will not, this is not painless, and it will not be, the community will say, oh, well, we should have done that a year ago. I mean, it will, there will be pain involved in this, and the students will know it when they go back to school over the next year.
And I'm really glad, Eric, that you would say that.
Actually, Tilly, I was going to say, because I'm usually the one who asks that question, you know, but I was going to not ask it tonight, because there is going to be impact, just what Eric said. But I think what, if you allow me to, what I hear you saying is, yes, there'll be impact, but we're going to deal with it, and we're going to make the best out of it, and because we don't have a choice. I mean, and more than not, just not having a choice, it's what we want, because our primary constituency, I'll say it off from me, my primary constituency are the kids. We owe it to those students to do everything we can, even if we aren't given the, all the funding we need.
Correct.
Since you guys get to be the heart, and I get to be the, I guess, the, I guess, to quantify.
Get to be the who?
I realize the nomenclature I would use, I'm not, it'd be inappropriate to maintain my pledge to my parents of not using profanity at meetings. So basically, if I boil it down to the numbers, what this is then, if we do not put an issue on, I guess, it's, do we roll the dice, I guess that's the key thing this evening, if we, do we want to go on the ballot with the city in November, or do we defer to 16? If we defer to 16, it's 48 positions and $5 million in cuts, and then we defer, I mean, that's really sort of the, which do we do? So that's, yeah, because in my opinion, you know, it would be not, it would be disadvantageous for both us and the city to be on the ballot at the same time. They've got a big, you know, we've done this more than, more than a few times, they have not that much experience doing campaigns, or they've done capital campaigns, but increases, they said they hadn't done an increase in 25, 30 years. I, yeah, I'm not a fan of us both being on the ballot at the same time. So I mean, to me, I hate, yeah, I'm not a fan of this. This sucks, is the best way to put it, this is not good. But, you know, and I hate to say it to a high degree, if we were on the ballot, you know, the economies of scale, some of the things here from the smaller space, we could be plowing those resources into, you know, curriculum, instruction.
Correct.
So unfortunately, I hate to say it to a high degree, part of the benefits that we were looking at from the high school, from the high school and the consolidation of the middle schools, those benefits and savings that we were going to plow into academics, basically, it goes in the air to defer to next year.
Right.
Okay.
If we were to do this, when would we need to do it? Do we want to talk about these?
Go ahead, I'm just trying to clarify what you were.
I was asking if we are going to deal with these 48.2 positions, when would we need to act on it as a board?
Well, there wouldn't be a formal action, because some of these positions you've actually already acted on. So the 10 back in May, the preschool positions, we've already dealt with those. The remainder are vacancies that we simply wouldn't fill.
We won't fill.
So it's not as if you would have to take a formal action to do this. We would just need your acknowledgement that that's the direction you wanted to go, and we simply wouldn't fill those positions.
Yeah.
And continue to redistribute that work.
Right. For example, a high school guidance counselor. There would be one less guidance counselor next year, so that work would be redistributed to some of the other guidance counselors. So we're not, we're not filling that position.
When, from a timing sequence, when does the Board of Elections need to have us do two, when is the last possible day that we could do reading? I know we could do two readings, we could do a reading on one day, we do a reading the next day. What are the last possible days for us to do that?
For the November ballot.
For the November ballot, yeah.
August 5th.
Okay.
So we would have to work in two readings between now and then.
It doesn't have to be at the, on August 5th, it has to be there on August 5th.
Has to be there.
So we have to deliver it on August 5th. So we have to do by August 4th.
Correct.
I agree with Mr. Silverman that I don't think it's a good idea to go on the ballot again in November, not since the city's doing it, and not since it was voted down in May. I mean, I think, for our best chance of passing it is to hold off. Would be my choice.
Well, it seems that we don't, we could, we could sit where we are, and number one, the idea of eliminating positions would be in effect anyway if we, if we follow the, what you're suggesting, that is, you're not filling positions, which means that we might have another opportunity to look at this more if we wanted to. And secondly, it seems to me that we don't necessarily have to come, we don't have to put anything in motion unless we want to try to go for November. And I think the November thing is really kind of tenuous as far as I'm concerned, and I'm not sure how we get there.
I don't recall, to be honest, I don't recall there, in my memory, there's no, I don't recall a time when both the city and the schools have had issues on the ballot at the same time. I know there was a, the, back in, when the rec center was going to be contemplated, there was the possibility of us being on the ballot at the same time, but they, at that situation, they deferred till our levy had passed. I know there's been times when the, I think the schools and the library possibly have been on the ballot at the same time, or the schools and the, not.
I think you're right.
But I don't, so to me, this is, it's a very, it's, yeah, I'm not a fan of this. I mean, the cuts, the economic impact, but, you know, we, it's, I hate for us to go on the ballot, and we lose, and the city loses, then we're back, we're both in the same position and 16. I mean, that would be disastrous. I hate to see that.
Well.
I mean, yeah, and just to, one more, I mean, that you just reminded me of, too, is that the other impact on the community is these positions go unfilled, that's less taxes that are going into Cleveland Heights and University Heights. So the city governments are going to suffer because of this as well, which in turn affects the, you know, the garbage collection and everything else. I mean, it, there's ripples to all of this every time we, yeah, thanks to the state.
And I'm, I'm sure our friends at the city would, will, would appreciate our choice here, and I'm sure they would support us in our endeavor going forward.
We've tried to work with them more cooperatively in terms of when we go and when they go. Again, when we went in May, we let the city know that we were going in May, really, to some extent, that was sort of a wink of an eye that we might free up November for the city to do their thing, so. Yeah, I think we are in a tough, we're in a tough place, but I think it's a place that we knew that it would, it would be possible that we would be here, so I don't think we have to push this too hard. It just seems pretty clear in terms of what we need to do, and we, and we have two administrators that are working on it, so I think we can, I think we could end this conversation for tonight, and we could come back and talk about it more in terms of building a strategy for raising the money that we need to raise in the future. Other comments?
You, what do you need?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Then I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Cobble?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yeah.
Mr. Silverman?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
And we adjourn.[1774.53]